I'd like to call the meeting to order for Wednesday, October 14th, for the Whittier Regional Vocational Technical High School. Time is 7:09. We had a previous class on our new iPads. So the first order of business, please, will salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one major under God, in the world with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business on the agenda is a public comment. Anybody here wish to address the school committee for a public comment? Being heard, we'll now move on to the second order of business. Approval of the minutes of --
Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Tucker.
Move the approval September 9.
Second.
I just --
Any --
There was a typo in the policy part of it on his five.
Five?
And it's just adding a T to the -- it says his and it should be this.
This.
That's all. I just thought maybe.
Any other comments, omissions, or deletions?
I'm an abstain as I wasn't here.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you need a roll call because I'm abstaining, but just to let you know.
There's just hand voting this. So, none being heard, will all those who are in favor based with the one correction say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, abstentions?
Abstain.
Who would? Now we have the treasurer's report. Assistant Treasurer, Mr. LaSage.
The report is as it seems. Is there any questions?
Any other motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to accept.
Approved, seconded by Mrs. Gilbert. Any questions, omissions, or deletions or concerns about the treasurer's report? None being heard, all in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now go on to all business, if you don't have any at the moment. Now we're going to reports and communications. Ms. Fox, student representative, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and all of our school committee members. The varsity football team has been playing some tough games this past month against some big Division I schools. They have been competing every week and playing strong. We're impressed by all of their hard work. The JV football team has been having a great season with a record of three wins and one loss. The boys' varsity soccer team is off to an impressive start to the season. Their record is five wins, one loss, and three ties. The players work great together and optimistic toward building a successful season. This month will be a busy month for them with many important games taking place and the boys are putting in a lot of hard work. The girls' varsity soccer team has been very busy lately with a record of seven wins and two losses. They look to continue their success, playing three games this week. We wish them the best. The girls' cross-country team is off and running with a record of four wins and three losses so far this season. The team has some star runners running some of the fastest times Whittier has ever seen. The boys' cross-country team has strong members consistently finishing in top spots all season long in the races. They too have a record of four wins and three losses so far in the season. The runners continue to work hard and have athletes running again some of the fastest times they've seen. Today was the first home meet of the season. The cheerleading team continues to support the football teams at game while they continue to train and get ready for two upcoming competitions this month. The team put on an impressive performance at the pep rally. The yearbook club is also off to a solid start this year. They have been busy at work capturing and receiving senior portraits. Later this month, they will be establishing the design approach for this year's book. The multicultural club is coordinating their plans and activities for the year to help them explore other cultures. Next month, they will be starting one of their big projects, being the coat drive. The journalism club is working hard on the upcoming issue of the school paper, technically speaking. They continue to look for new ideas and stories and are looking forward to the upcoming issue. The chorus is rehearsing for the upcoming open house performance on Sunday, November 8. They are currently in the process of choosing a show for the next spring musical. They have several good ideas and are confident that it's going to be spectacular. The Whittier Drama Club is also looking to the next spring musical and beginning practice. Preparations are being made and students are excited. The environmental club has been continuing its daily recycling duties throughout the building and continues to gain support from students. The peer-to-peer club has wasted no time and are already busy with two projects going for this month. The first is Pink Day on Friday, October 16th, for breast cancer awareness. They're encouraging people to wear pink and in addition, they are setting up an information table in the cafeteria that day, selling bracelets to donate proceeds for breast cancer. Their second project is going to be on October 27th for a national Above the Influence Day. They're encouraging everyone to wear black to promote blocking out negative influences in our lives that could lead to negative behaviors. Again, the club will set up an informational table in the cafeteria for inspirational messages and to offer the purchase of bracelets to donate proceeds to Above the Influence team programs. The chess program is going strong with a group of four members and several other students that drop in for a casual game. They are continuing to boost their advertising in hopes of attracting new members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quite thorough as usual. You write that yourself?
Have teachers email me in information of what's going on.
Very good. Very good. And I'll move on to our next topic for discussion, the superintendent's report. Ms. Lynch.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. For informational purposes for you tonight in your packet, our hires for bus drivers, for coaches, tutors for the 2015-16 school year, vocational competency tracking for the school year, Title I parent liaisons, co-op liaisons, NIOSH safety implementation, which is the National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health facilitator, portfolio implementation, tech prep coordinator, Spanish translator, Portuguese translation services, mentor for the 2015-16 school year, evening school instructors, event ticket collectors, MCAS ELA and math retest after-school program, the grade 12 SAT prep after-school program, math tutor, and as a resignation of a school bus driver. Also, at this time, there is not a budget update. MCAS update, Katrina Jensen, the coordinator of data assessment, will be doing a presentation on MCAS tonight. On Thursday, September 10th, 2015, I attended the Mars meeting in Marlborough with Cara Cosmas, our business manager. On Wednesday, September 16th, I attended the Northern Essex Community College Partnership Meeting along with Patty Lowell, the director of people personnel. We discussed early college opportunities that we'll be working on for this upcoming school year. On Monday, September 21st, I attended the Merrimack Valley Chamber Access to Education and Workforce Development in Andover along with Andrew Pinchin, one of our assistant principals. Speakers at the breakfast included Secretary of Education Pizer. On Thursday, September 24th, I attended the Amay's House Annual Breakfast at DeBarrow's along with Beverly DeSalvo, Cara Cosmas, Rich Bruselli, and Judy Zado along with two students. On Monday, September 28th, I met with my mentor Joan Conley. We were able to take a tour and visit some classrooms. On Friday, October 2nd, Beverly DeSalvo, our vocational reporter, and I met with Lang Glenn, president of Northern Essex Community College, to begin discussions on partnering on developing a culinary arts program at Northern Essex Community College. On Wednesday, October 7th, I attended the super induction program in Marlborough. On Wednesday, October 7th, along with Beverly DeSalvo and Cara Cosmas, we attended the Merrimack Valley Chamber Annual Dinner at DeBarrow's. The keynote speaker at that event was Governor Charlie Baker. On Thursday, October 8th, Cara Cosmas and I attended the Mars meeting in Marlborough. On Tuesday, October 13th, I along with members of the safety team presented to parents with the district instrument in terms of school safety. The entire administrative team was present along with members of the safety team that included Rich Bruselli, Alex Valhulie, Rich Gonzalez, Cheryl Beegan, and Harry Takishin. On Wednesday, October 28th, MSB will be coming to do a visit at Whittier Tech to review and evaluate the statement of interest that was submitted last spring. We look forward to their visit. Also tonight, I handed out to you my entry plan for this upcoming school year. The plan is intended to obtain a comprehensive overview of the school district and determine what opportunities for change are needed. And at our next meeting, I plan to present to you my student learning professional practice schools for this school year and they will be connected to my entry plan. Also, I have a Skills USA field trip, November 22nd through 24th. It's the Fall State Leadership Conference in Marlborough. I need approval for the overnight.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Mr. LaSage, segue, Mrs. Gilbert. Mr. Early.
We have paperwork and permissions lists.
Yes, we do.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any others?
I just wanted to give you an update on outside projects as of right now. In Amesbury, at the Amesbury Public Library, carpentry is modifying the ends of the bookcases to display literature. And in Havrell, the metal fabrication is creating a new holiday bell for what -- and it will be displayed in the downtown area over the holidays. Havrell also will be doing a metal fabrication. Team Havrell building a sculpture for the city to be displayed at the Bradford Rail Trail. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Any questions for the superintendent?
They're busy.
Just for -- I've been looking at part of her report where it goes through the hires and it lists everybody's name and everything. And I'm hoping to be able to present to the board at the next meeting a way to consolidate this. It's a little more -- I don't think we should be listing everybody's name. It gets kind of personal. I think, you know, hires could be listed by categories, you know, for like coaches, free coaches, whatever. Because at the beginning of the agenda, you know, it lists the categories. But then when you get into the packet, it lists everybody's name and everything. I'll just bring it forth at the next meeting. We can discuss it and vote up or down, whatever we like. I just think it's like it's a lot of -- I know it's going to be quicker now with the iPads, but it's a lot of, you know, everybody's name and where they're from, page after page. Mr. Early.
It's all well and good, but it's kind of public information.
Yeah.
Oh, I know it's public information.
I know, but you get into that very gray area.
I just bring something forward. We can discuss it and wish of the committee. Up to them, up to you guys.
Is it on screen?
Good evening, Chairman Labella and school committee members and Superintendent Lynch. Thank you for having me this evening. It's nice to see everybody. I'm Beverly DeSalvo, the vocational technical coordinator, and I'm going to provide you the vocational technical update. Program updates. We will be going -- automotive department will be doing a two-and-a-half-year compliance review during this school year. Marketing and office technology have combined efforts. Students will still be able to have the opportunity to learn a trade certificate in their particular program. We have just combined basically real estate and instructional forces. In addition, office technology is now being called business technology by the DOA, Department of Education. In addition to that, a new program that I'm working on is filing on March 1st of next year to open a Chapter 74 pre-engineering program. I'm developing my advisory board now. I have had support from Northern Essex Community College and some other engineers and teachers within the engineering field. So I'm going to be meeting with them at our first advisory board meeting on next week, Thursday, October 22nd. So we're looking forward to that. We just completed the equipment purchases for 2015. So just to update you on what departments, we had six lifts done in automotive, a 3D printer in CAD drafting, carpentry. We have the sawdust collector, a job site trailer, and a table saw. Culinary arts, conveyor dishwasher, a double steamer, and a coffee machine. Graphics got a sublimation printer, a needle embroidery machine, and a photo printer. In addition, machine tech got a horizontal saw. And metal fabrication, Megan Tig welder, and a tubing vending machine. So we appreciate those approvals of those purchases. And, whoop, sorry. I fired the last slide. Very sensitive. And finally, to report on cooperative education, as October 1st, 122 seniors are out on co-op with 38% of the senior class, and we just opened the doors, in my opinion, so. And I just completed the positive placement rate report for Superintendent Lynch, the class of 2014 follow-up survey. We had a 94% positive placement rate, and that was for 297 graduates for the class of 2014. So that's it, that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Beverly, the positive placement, that includes those going on to college or two- or four-year school or some other kind of training?
Yes, positive placement is employment going on to technical or two- or four-year college universities or the military.
Okay, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Early.
Automotive, compliance review, two-and-a-half-year point, what is that?
So NATF, the shop is NATF certified. So every five years, we have to go through a full NATF recertification. And then at two-and-a-half-year point, they come back and make sure that we're still keeping up with all the standards that require us to maintain that certification. Yep, yep.
Thank you. Beverly, on the positive placement, how does that compare to years past?
Last year, the class of 2013 had a 96% positive placement rate, and that was for 272 graduates. And in 2012, we had a 92% positive placement rate for 320 graduates.
Thank you.
Your new program, your engineering program that you're going to -- your pre-engineering, is that meeting open? I'm just curious about -- I'm also an engineer.
Oh, certainly. Have you -- I'm sure that you have received your invitation to the advisory board next Thursday night. And we would love to have you, yes, thank you. That's part of the application package. You have to have an advisory board. So that's -- and we're lucky that we have a wonderful advisory board, as you know, from the participation at the dinners in the fall program, so.
Are you looking for additional members?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Do you need to be notified prior to that meeting?
If you have someone that would like to be a member of the board, you can call my office and we'll send them an invitation. Certainly if it becomes that evening and you know someone, please ask them to come down. There will be a light supper that we serve starting at 5:00. Just because most of the members come straight from work. So I'll be here at 5:00.
This might be a question more for Harry, but in the last year, we've upgraded the hazardous collection systems, both in cosmetology and in the automotive. Are we periodically -- does OSHA come in and examine? I don't know if you know that or not.
I do know that, and I forget what the department is this call, but we certainly, we maintain all of those standards. We have, I believe, even monthly checklists for some of the filters on the auto body spray booth, for example, or the oil collection containers down in automotive. And we always maintain those so that we are in compliance.
So all the educational stuff is done with safety and the --
Yes, in addition to that, every year, we have -- we also, as Maureen, Superintendent Lynch, mentioned, we have the NIOSH safety compliance. So every year, when we come back in from the summer, we make sure that all our machines have been calibrated back to student, you know, safety in case somebody used them over the summer, like our maintenance department or our transportation department, things of that nature. So all of the machines are reviewed at the beginning of the school year prior to the students entering.
And does that become part of the curriculum?
Yes and no. So the teachers are responsible to make sure that the equipment is safe for student use. In addition to that, in a lot of the trade areas, students have to take specific machine exams for safety. So that's part of the curriculum. But the instructor always ensures that they're calibrated for proper student use.
Great. Any other questions from Mr. Salvo? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next is the data and assessment. Ms. Jensen.
16 school trust students. I'm wondering how many of the total of the model communities. This was from all the --
Good evening, school committee chairman, school committee members, and Superintendent Lynch. I am Katrina Jensen, and I'm your coordinator of data and assessment. And tonight, I will be presenting this past year's MCAS scores. This year, we wanted to start with how a few of our -- two of our special populations have evolved over the last five years. So in 2010, 2011, Whittier Tech had a 22.9% special education rate. The state had a 17. And this past school year, we had a 29.5% special education rate. And again, the state is pretty level at 17%. So in the last five years, we've had an increase of 7%, which is pretty significant. For low income, again, five years ago, our rate was 27.4% and the state was 34.2%. And this past year, we had a rate of 44.8% for low-income students in grade 10, and the state had a 26.3%. These are our English Language Arts scores. And as you can tell, 99% of our students passed on the first try and 93% of them were able to get into advanced or proficient. In English Language Arts, we are above the state average in proficient in student growth and in proficient in advanced for special education and the low-income population. This slide compares where the students were in seventh grade to where they were last year. And as you can tell, what I'd like to highlight is our increase in the advanced category as well as getting those students out of the needs improvement and failing categories. Next is mathematics, and we had a 96.4% pass rate. And 78% of those students got into advanced or proficient. And once again, we are above the state average in all areas, for all students, for student growth, for special ed, and for low income. We're above the state average. This slide again shows you where the students were in eighth grade to 10th grade. And again, I'd just like to highlight the advanced category increase and the failing category decrease. And then we have science and technology. And we had 94% of our students pass on the first time. 71% got advanced or proficient. And again, biology, we're above the state for all students, special ed, and low income. There is no growth factor for the science test. And again, the growth from eighth to 10th, amazing in the advanced and proficient, and again in the failing, that we're getting those kids out of that range. So right now, for the class of 2016, 99% of the students have fulfilled this graduation requirement. We have one student left that needs to take the science exam. And right now, for the junior class, the class of 2017, 94% of the students have fulfilled this MCAS graduation requirement. And this year, for new initiatives for the MCAS, we are going to target grade 10 students identified at risk of failure of the MCAS exam and provide additional tutoring in English, math, or biology. We applied for grant funding to provide a mathematics tutor who will utilize the data to deliver tutoring for targeted grade 10 students. And we will coordinate and schedule a science-specific MCAS professional development for the science department.
Any questions for Ms. Jensen?
How about a comment? Amazing, fabulous job.
Well, I will take it, but I think it's a -- starts right from the top, from the superintendent all the way down. Everybody's working really well.
Yes, Russ.
When is the tutoring done? I noticed that you said you would be identifying those 10th graders and then setting up tutoring. Is it during school or is it after school?
We have both. We have after-school programs for students. We also have it during school for students.
Okay.
Yes.
I got a question. Do we also target the ninth graders that come in, say, in the failing or whatever?
So we do have a tutoring program for the ninth-grade students. We use MCAS practice tests. We have their Stanford scores from the day that they came in in May. So we do have a bunch of information. So we do tutor the ninth-grade students as well. Yes.
Any other comments?
Thank you very much. Nicely done.
And I'll have the director, Ms. Lowell.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, and Superintendent Lynch. I'm Ms. Lowell, Patricia Lowell, the Director of People Personnel Services. In your packet, you have received the census data projected October 1. I've also included a summary comparison of the last year's.
Any questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Early.
A question. I want to commend the setting community, the community, the kids in town. They're missing numbers. Back a few years ago, all the Whittier, 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 we stopped seeing the increases here from a lot of the communities. And there is some decreases though, but there's probably reasons for that. However, we have to commend everybody, starting with the schools and the tour that we have here. It's a big thing because a lot of kids, whether it's sixth, seventh, or eighth grade, don't know where they want to go. And a lot of them don't make up their mind until they open that letter on April 4th. I want to commend everybody that's involved, as well as the Whittier staff from the superintendent down because it's a pretty intensive process. I get a lot of calls on it, why this, why that? And I send a lot of this data out to a lot of different people. And, you know, it's kind of self-explanatory with these numbers. And back a few years ago, you know, all you heard was negative, negative. And I used to be up in the stands in the football games a lot. And all you heard was the Lawrence kids are coming here. And I'd say, you know, it's not all school choice. Lawrence isn't the first one here. Nothing is. So whoever's giving a lot of these people information, it's not the right information. But if they look at any of this information up, it's pretty impressive. Thank you.
Well, there's two things that stand out to me. One is that if you look at grade 11, with 355 students enrolled, 55 were choice. You look at grade 10, it was 323, and there's 29 choice. And this year, it's 342 and no choice. So to piggyback what Mr. Early's saying, that we're getting more students applying.
In district.
In district. And I don't know, I haven't been here that long, but I think this is the first year there's ever been, since choice started, that we've had no choice. Is that true?
A long time.
By 10 years, yeah.
At least.
I think with the educational and the academics, vocational, educational tied together, it's becoming more attractive for students to want to go to Whittier because they realize that even with their vocational, if they plan to go further on education, whether it's two-year or four-year or whatever, there's that opportunity. I think we've seen the last few years, since I've been here, we've had some exemplary students that chose, you know, to use their vocation plus enhance it by going on to a college to take what they learned here, say like in electrical, and go on to become electrical engineers or something. So I think the trend is going our way. The only fear I have, not really a fear, but concern is, you know, if this increases, we're going to get to where we are at probably full enrollment and then be forced to go into some type of, we have a lottery?
Waitlist.
Waitlist. I think everybody that meets the requirement should be able to come here.
Build an addition.
Whatever, yeah. Yes, Mr. Early.
This is kind of a hot topic all the time when you see these statistics, you know? But it speaks for itself for everybody that's involved in it. And I can remember some 15 years ago, 16 years ago, when I came in here, everything was choice, 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 choice. And I didn't know the real side of either way, but it's come a long way. The only thing, the downside of it is, you know, we lose X number of dollars a year for every student, whether it be $5,000 or it's costing us $8,000. And I heard those numbers from day one. We had seats available. But now that everybody in district is getting in here, you know, the school choice, as you see it right here, is zero. And -- And some years ago, I told you, people were talking about school choice all the time, why their kids can't get in. And all we have to do is go to school. And that'll sum it up. Thank you.
Any other question? Yes, Ms. True.
I'd just like to note that I think since 1999, we haven't had this many students from Newberry. 27 is a record, I believe.
Oh, probably, since I've been doing it.
Yeah, when I looked at the data, it said we hadn't had that many students ever since 1999. 27 is a good number.
I think you're seeing a trend on Georgetown, Merrimack's, those small communities, more students. There'd be four, when I first got on the committee, almost what, about 60% was from Haverhill. Was it more than that?
Probably more.
I think now the trend is, you know, becoming district-wide, which is, you know, every district consents as many students as they like. There's no quota for the city or town. Okay, well, thank you.
Right, thank you.
Next on the agenda item is a report from the Principal, Ms. Leganes.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Superintendent Lynch, and the rest of the school committee members. Just a little recap. It seems like the months are flying by. The last month, recap of September. Andre Dubus came in to speak Thursday, September 17. Spoke to the entire student body about the negative influences our students are exposed to. And it was a powerful lecture that was well-received by both staff and students. During the week of the 21st to the 25th, we hosted our Spirit Week. And we had our pep rally that Friday. Each day had a different theme, including Class Color Day, a Red and White Blue Day, a Sports Day, a Spiffy Day, and a Whittier Pride Day on Friday, along with friendly competition between the classes and the faculty at the pep rally. One of the competitions that we had that really created a life of its own, it was a pull-up contest. If you can imagine, the staff members and the students, they had a contest. And there's some great, if you get the time, there's some great pictures, poster-sized pictures in the cafeteria. Thank you, Superintendent Lynch, for letting us hang those up. But you can see the determination of the kids doing the pull-ups as well as the staff members. So it's really neat to see. If you get a chance sometime, walk through the cafeteria because it's all up there. The Booster Club is hosting a cheerleading competition. I believe this is the first that we've hosted here at Whittier Tech on Sunday, the 18th. And at 12:30, because we are the host team, and at 12:30, there's going to be an exhibition from Whittier. And then the real, the actual competition starts at 1 o'clock. So I believe it goes from about 1 to 4 this Sunday, if anybody's interested. Superintendent Lynch referred to our Whittier Safety Team. On Tuesday, meaning last night, we met with the parents and reviewed our safety protocols and procedures. I just want to say that we continue to make the commitment to the safety of our students and staff through the ongoing monitoring of Whittier's school safety procedures and protocols. During the presentation, one focus was on our shelter-in-place and our enhanced lockdown trainings. We also had that day, the 25th as well, an in-service training for our staff, the 25th of September. So we're doing this, a nice progression, and all about the safety of our building. Open House is Sunday, November 8, from 1 to 4. Invitations to 7th and 8th grade students in the Whittier District have been mailed out. During the Open House, there'll be admissions, presentations, displays, and demonstrations.
Thank you, sir.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you. It was a pleasure.
Thank you. Now we'll get into the meat of the meeting.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, Superintendent Lynch. In your packet, I have several things under the Business section. The first being what always happens at this time of year. It's the presentation of the Five-Year Capital Plan. It's basically a planning document. We update it each year. We try to project to the best that we can the district's capital needs over a future five-year period. We consider a piece of equipment or a replacement piece of equipment capital if the cost is expected to be $5,000 or more. But occasionally, we do put in items that individually are less than $5,000. But if their total cost is significant, we do include them. And in this case, under Technology, you would see that we've included the one-to-one iPad. It is a significant expense. We want to identify it so that you know that we plan for those leases every year. You will notice in the Building Maintenance section, there are two infrastructure items that we have included this year. As you know, we did submit a statement of interest for a total building rehab with MSBA, and we sent that in last April. But we were one of 97 applicants for about 16 slots. And as such, there is absolutely no guarantee that we will be one of the districts that will be selected to go forward with the process, even though they are coming to visit. That does not necessarily mean that we will be selected. So we thought that there were some infrastructure needs that needed to be brought to your attention. And the Superintendent, Maintenance Director, and I wanted to identify some of the things that we thought we wanted you to be aware of in the event that the district is not able to proceed with a full building renovation. The first of these is the football bleachers. They are very safe, but they are old. The structure itself is original to the building, and the seats, the aluminum seats, are probably 25 to 30 years old. We have the cost listed at $800,000, but that is basically an estimate by the architectural firm that did the facility study. So I really, we really don't know what the specific cost of that will be. And so we have contracted with a firm who was visiting the school this week to do an engineering study of the structure so that we would have a better understanding of how they are. And we have found that they are in very good condition, but they are old. And if there's any replacement or repair to do, what the scope of the work will be. And we'll be getting a written report on that within the next couple of weeks. That report will also enable us to kind of hone down what the cost of that would be. And again, these are things that were included in the building study. But if we don't go forward with the renovation, there are things that we need to make sure that we identify so that if we have to do the repairs or the replacements, we've told you about it, and we can start to plan for that. The other items that have been identified is the boilers. Most or many of the boilers will need to be replaced. I'm not sure that there are any, there's probably no original boilers because boilers don't typically last 45 years. But some of them are encroaching on 20 years or more, and they're aging, and they're also very inefficient. So the Maintenance Director has identified a phased-in plan. We would be able to install the boilers here, but we would still have to buy the boilers themselves. And they are anywhere from about $35,000 to $40,000 a year. So he's identified a phased program to replace the boilers over the next five years if, again, we are not invited into the process to renovate the building. The reason we brought these to your attention is not to be alarming in any way, but just because we wanted to identify that some of the, many of the items in this building are original to the building. And I don't know about you, but my roof's not going to last me for 45 years. So we've done an exceptional job of keeping things in good shape here, but we need to pay attention that they are getting older. And infrastructure repairs are costly. And so therefore, the Superintendent and I will be working in the next couple of months with our treasurer to help to identify different funding options that we may be available to use to help fund these projects. And we will present our findings to you at a future meeting. So are there any questions on the capital plan?
Yes.
I thought there might be. Again, it's an estimate. That was an estimate given by the architectural firm. But not knowing the scope of the project, that's why we invited the engineering firm to come in, because it may be that the structure is good, but the seats need to be replaced, which would be a totally different cost. I always try to give you the worst-case scenario so you know what to expect and hope that when we actually get the details, it's nowhere near what we thought. We don't know, but they estimated $500 to $800. I put in the $800.
Yes, Russ.
The building study that we did, that we submitted, that had a whole list of tasks. They prioritized them from high to low, or they just throughout the entire?
They did not. No, they did not.
So I'm assuming that as you look at that, you're, we're going to be prioritizing against that list from what's most urgent to last. So bleachers came up as one of the higher ones?
We want to make sure that the bleachers are structurally safe, and they are, and that they will be so for a while. But we don't know if they would last 5 to 10 years. They might be good for three to four years. So we wanted, because there's a lot of people that go there and a lot of people that go into the stands, we just want to make sure that the structure is sound and how long we can expect it to be.
So at some point, though, we do need to see that whole list again from that report and figure out what the priorities are and probably get the building subcommittee back and kind of help organize and plan if we don't get that opportunity. But I hope we do, because, I mean, you put together a really wonderful, wonderful package.
I hope we do too.
And we do have, they said, "We have great bones in here, and we have a good reason to do the upgrades that they're talking about."
I think what we're trying to do originally here is plan for the possible inevitability.
Right.
I know that the Triton School System started planning, and then they found out that their bleachers were not safe, and now they don't have bleachers. So we're hoping to get an early start on some of the issues that inevitably would end up, you know, if we don't or we choose not to move forward on, you know, this rebuilding program. And we know sooner or later, you know, the boilers are going to be, either new coves will come out or something, you know? They're getting older in age.
Should we set a time to get a list and kind of hash it all over for a place?
They can do that, but I think the more important thing is they're going to be looking at ways to start planning for this. How, you know, we were fortunate in the past with the roof, that we were able to fund that, you know, through the budget process, you know? But hopefully down the road, we don't want to be, you know, say, oh, we have to go to the city and towns this year to take care of the boilers. Then next year, we have to come back and say, oh, guess what? We have to fix this, you know? So if we can come up with a plan.
Oh, yeah.
Or a process or a system to start planning for the future.
Right, right. And I notice there's a couple of good items here that we talked about, but I know that that plan had a whole list of things. So we should probably look at that entire list.
Probably do that.
Put together the five-year plan in case we don't get the opportunity. So the towns are aware, because it is difficult to go back year after year, and they're saying, wait a minute, didn't you come back? You know? And then we have all these arguments with, well, discussions with finance committees and school committees and everything else.
Mr. Early.
I have a couple of quick questions. Scoreboards.
We did.
Do we have a look, go out and look?
Sponsors.
Coca-Cola, Pepsi.
We haven't done that in the past. We haven't done that in the past. That was done last spring. So, I mean, certainly in the future, we could definitely be looking at that.
That's one, my question. The buses, where do we stand on the two or three new buses and the lease?
We have been, we've been buying two new buses a year, and we lease 10 buses. We have two years left on the bus lease.
Have any of this new ones come in yet?
Yeah, yeah. It was part of the capital plan, and we do our best to try to get them in before August so that they're ready to go. Basically, what I see for the buses is, in talking to the transportation coordinator, there's going to be maybe one or two years where we might try to buy three buses. And then in a combination of the 10 that we lease over a five-year lease and updating or buying two every year, we should be able to have a plan where every five to seven years, we're replacing the buses, which is what is recommended.
I think in the buses, we should expand scope to look in propane.
Absolutely. Boston is doing propane buses. After you spoke to me about it, we went and researched it, and we actually had someone come in here and meet with us. And when we do the next lease, we're going to be looking at propane. And we're going to use the experiences that Boston has. Let them kind of check it out and see how it goes. And we have somebody that we can talk to to see how it's going, and we can start in that fashion if you'd like.
Tony and myself, I actually saw one on the convention. They never have as much torque, right?
No, they have no power.
But they, the maintenance is a lot, and the savings in fuel.
They seem to be a good way to go. Exactly.
You know, there's some routes here that you have to go up some hilly areas. And the other thing I did notice, which is very good, the sawdust collector, we budgeted $195,000, $171,000.
Well, that's the point that I.
That's a plus.
Well, I have to take that result off. Unfortunately, this went off. We had to rebid the item. When we bid it the first time, the link on the Inspector General's website, we thought that it went to Goods and Services as well as the Central Register. Even though it's a piece of equipment, it involves a little bit of construction, and it didn't go to the Central Register. So we contacted the office, and they advised that we rebid it. That bid opened. I'm hoping the same bidder comes in. It was a great price, so I'm hoping maybe we'll get a better price because we had to rebid it. I don't know. So I'm not able to report that those bid results are definite tonight because we had to go back to the well. And now we know, we have to post it in both places.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Wood.
Just a quick question. It's a small item, but about $23,000. Did you get out the uniforms? I know we were just looking into that, and we found that there's a lot more competition out there than there was a couple of years ago relative to the cost.
Uniforms of?
Athletics uniforms.
No. Typically, the athletic director gets his three quotes, and he makes the decision. But we can always bid anything out that we feel we would get a better price for.
We were just looking into that, and it kind of had been similar with the athletic director kind of always choosing it. But there's a lot more competition out there now, and the product is the same, but there's a lot less on prices. It seemed like it kind of been a monopoly between a few companies out there, but there's some, definitely some room for savings.
Those uniforms are a whole bunch of uniforms, though. That probably was five different sports. And we're not at the same level as the sports might be in your other district. But that one this year was about five different sports. So individually, they were maybe $4,000 to $5,000 apiece. They weren't a large, large purchase. They were replenishing. But we can certainly look into that.
Yeah, like I said, it's only, I know it's a small amount, $23, $24, but if you can save $5,000, it's worth it.
It's a valid point, and we will do that. We will look at that.
You could have the same company supply all the different sports.
Yeah, I mean, I could give you the names of a couple that really came in and bid low, and maybe they can bid in the process or something like that. It was just something that we had never looked into. We really started to look into it, and there was a savings there.
We're trying to get into a phased plan similar to the buses with the uniforms. We know that every so many years, they need to be replenished. So we're trying to add that to the capital list because it does come out smaller items, but larger purchase price. So thank you for that suggestion.
No problem.
Mr. Tucker. Yeah, on page four with the sawdust collector, one more, $195, and on the previous page, three, removal of old dust collectors. Is that the same?
When we budgeted, when we budgeted for the installation, we did not budget for the removal because it's going into a different location in the building. We are hoping, if the bids come in low, that we'll have enough money in the capital for this year that we'll be able to do it. But in the event, Mr. Takishian wanted to put it in there to identify that we may have to pay to have those removed. So that's just to make you aware, and hopefully, we won't have to go down that road.
All right, thank you. Mr. Murphy.
I had the same question as Mr. Tucker, but I also have another one.
Sure.
On page eight, the security camera replacements.
Yes.
Do we replace them every year?
Different ones.
Because it's continuous.
Continuous program. We upgrade some. We find in looking at some that they don't give us the view that we necessarily want or we need an expanded view. Sometimes we add cameras. The $6,000 on the line below it is a lease cost because in order to keep the camera system as good as it's been, we're going to, we're going to need to upgrade the server. Because as you expand the program and the technology gets better, you need the infrastructure behind it to keep it at its best.
Just a follow-up on that. Do we consult with the police department on where to place the cameras?
Yes.
Okay, because I know we did that at the Boys Club, and they were very helpful with finding areas that we didn't think of.
Good point. Yes, sir.
Thank you. The replaced boilers cost, were they estimates from your staff or were these directly bid?
Estimates from the staff for the equipment only. We would be able to do a lot of the work in-house. We would be able to do a lot of the work in-house.
Okay, these numbers, I just want the other members to know, these numbers are incredibly low. If you could change boilers out for that kind of money with staff save, that's incredible.
That's what our maintenance director put down. I have to, you know, go by his expertise, but that's what he thinks it will cost. Hopefully, he's right.
There's been some state programs with up to 80% reimbursement on these. But even with that, you'll beat that with that kind of money.
Hope so.
That's a good point, yeah.
Anything else on the capital plan?
Anything else on the capital plan?
Good job, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Good questions. And then the last thing, since I've already addressed the bid, is the variance report. You get this every quarter. The only thing that I've done, every year, I try to hone the report a little bit so that the information is a little more useful. And when I started this year, I noticed that the dental insurance is, we've also been combining that in the active health insurance line. And I think that it makes a lot more sense to do what I did last year with retiree insurance. So I'm breaking out the expenses. You'll see a large negative in that line. That will be offset at the end of the year with a transfer by the savings in the other accounts, similar to what I did last year. And also, if you do see a negative amount in the active health insurance, we were able to get the software system to actually project the cost out. It usually doesn't encumber the health insurance, and this year, we were able to get it to encumber it. The problem is, we outlay two months plus in advance in the summer when we have no teachers here. So it's going to stay negative until the withholdings that we've collected from the teachers catch up with what we've paid out. We're way ahead in our payments, and we've only collected about three or four checks from the teachers. So that will eventually go the other way as we get closer to the beginning of the calendar year. And other than that, everything looks good. We're in pretty good shape, and I'd entertain any questions you may have. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kara.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the chairperson's report. October annual agenda items, we went over the variance. We had a very extensive update in the capital plan and the vocational technical programs. The November meeting, I hope everybody realizes we moved the date because of Veterans Day, we'll have a review of our common curriculum, collective bargaining contracts. What does that have? We have bargaining contracts. We're all set, okay. And review update of our technology plans. I think that'll be very interesting since this year, all four classes have the iPads. Teachers don't have them?
No, not this year. Next year.
Next year. I'm sorry, can I correct it? Subcommittee reports, we have the executive committee, we have not needed, need for a meeting right away. Instructional personnel, Dr. Testaverde.
We haven't had a meeting, and I keep looking to the superintendent, but I don't think we still need one, do we? We're big relief. We need one at this time.
Okay, Plan Operations, Mr. Tucker.
Plan Operations did not meet. We had a tour on what school started, as far as I know, we're all set on that.
Great. And Mr. Burns is not here about salary negotiations. I think we're all clear on that. Policy.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Irving is not here.
I will.
Go ahead.
We met during our last, before our last meeting, and there are a number of policies that will be reviewed, and we're bringing it back to the committee in November.
Okay. You have to, go ahead, sir.
Do we have to suspend the rules, or do we get a vote of reading of our first reading?
I think there was one, one.
The memorial gift.
Yes.
Memorial gift.
Was the only one that we suspended the rules for. But we have approximately eight or 10 here easily that need to be reviewed.
Do we need a second reading of the rule that we suspended the rules for?
But we need to approve the minutes.
Right. You have the minutes of November the 12th of the, excuse me, September the 9th, I'm sorry. September the 9th of the policy, the motion to that effect.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Gilbert, second by Mr. Murphy. Are they all in your packet to review? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any others?
I just wanted to remind the committee to please bring, they were sent to us for the last meeting, but they will be reviewed again for a second reading in November. So please remember to bring your packet again of those materials. Lisa may also have them now on the iPad, but.
Lisa will send them to everybody on the iPads.
But they, there are a good, a good bunch.
Yeah, I've been reading them there. There's a lot of changes, yeah.
We haven't had a first reading on those.
We didn't have a first reading on them?
No, we didn't even go over them because there were so many of them. We dealt with the memorials because that was pressing.
Yeah.
And we decided to have a lengthy.
We will with the first reading. I think Mr. Irving.
Our meeting at 6:00.
Yeah, recommended everybody kind of review them.
Yeah.
I started to look at them, a lot of them have to deal with discipline, absenteeism, safety.
Yeah.
Okay, the next meeting is November the 12th. We moved it from Veterans Day to the 12th, 7:00 PM. And don't forget, November the 8th is the open house.
Be here.
2 to 4.
1 to 4.